I would like to call the March 20th meeting of the school committee to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of its own control.
And I'd like to acknowledge that Westwood Media Center is live streaming this meeting and is also recording it for later viewing on their platforms. Thank you so much, Westwood Media Center. We are grateful. And I'll hand it over to the superintendent.
Sure, thanks. Before we move into the formal part of the agenda, just happy to show some goings around around the district. So we'll start off, so recently we had 38 5th graders from Pine Hill Chorus performing "America the Beautiful" at the Providence Bruins game. So very happy to have them there and certainly be celebrated and acknowledged there. We recently had our Thurston 8th grade students through two different groups going to the Edward M. Kennedy Institute at UMass Boston doing a simulated legislative process. Sorry, I couldn't think of the word. I know Caitlin, you actually had the opportunity to be there on one of the days.
Yes, I got to go be a chaperone one of the days and it was amazing. The students went through the whole process of taking a bill and then bringing it to the floor and voting on it, but in the meantime, they split off into subcommittees. They had experts coming in and explaining different parts of it. And so they were focusing on AI and the impacts of regulating AI or not. It was a very cool day.
And I think we got into it through a lottery, right?
Yes, you have to apply. There's a lottery. You have to be selected. So this was our first time being selected.
So hopefully, we'll get selected again.
That's certainly a good hope.
I know.
Here we have some students at the Downey. So there's a technology lesson taught by Mrs. Cressitt down about the importance of proper posture while typing, and it led to a special event thought up by one of our 4th graders at Downey where there was a yoga connection made during the lesson which inspired Gossen, who's the teacher at Downey, to have his neighbor Amy Orsini, former Downey parent and licensed yogi, come in and host a yoga session on posture, breathing, and meditation. So it was a cool thing that came out of Downey, took place during PE class, which perfectly complemented their fitness unit. So happy to have that. We have students here at Pine Hill making Rube Goldberg projects. So again, where we try to make learning alive in the district. Happy to do that. That was Mrs. Goose leading that at Pine Hill. Happy to share that Martha Jones librarian Beth Swinning is our new poet laureate for the town of Westwood, is recognized by the select board recently. So very happy to acknowledge Beth. I'm actually going to have Steve, uh, there we go. I'm going to have Steve, let's move to the next one.
So this was this morning. Amber Crawley's husband Dennis is an engineer that works for an engineering firm that works with robotic dogs. So we've had therapy dogs come into the schools before, but this one was a little different. And it was just amazing to see them like in person. They push up challenges with kids and the dog won every time. Just really amazing. The, he actually, they dispatch these dogs to various agencies, including the armed forces, and they literally go around the perimeter of these areas and they remotely like report suspicious activity to people that are thousands of miles away. So it's like a real actual application of this technology. So the kids were just fascinated and it was just, he just walked around, the whole school went into every class.
This was at Downey?
It was at Downey School this morning.
I love how my kid did not tell me this. I asked him how his day was. Fine, like you had a robot, visit your classroom. He told me nothing, so.
Well, you could bring it up. It was fascinating. So a big thank you to Amber for having her husband come in and do that.
It's amazing.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then our last senior on WPS, I'm actually going to have Caitlin talk about this one.
Yeah, so this past Tuesday was the 20th Annual Conference for the Mass Association of School Superintendents Women's Educational Leadership Network. And our own Latifah Frank is one of the organizers of this event. And there was a wonderful segment of the day where the focus shifted to how does having strong female educational leaders help our students and expose them to different opportunities? And so two of our students spoke. Melina and Gabby did such a phenomenal job. If you've been at District Events, they speak a lot about their experiences here and I'm so proud of their poise and their ability to share how their time here at Westwood. And in particular, they were talking that day about Ms. Frank and the other leaders. Ms. Davenport was asked to stand up and be recognized in the conference for their impact on Melina and Gabby's experiences. And it was really amazing.
And I will just say, I was in my office and started getting texts from colleagues of mine of other districts who were there at the event talking about how wonderful our kids were, how wonderful Gabby and Melina were. So there was, I said, please get me some pictures before you guys leave so we can share. So great things happening around the district and certainly happy to profile them here. So the first item under the superintendent's report, I'm happy to introduce, I'm happy to announce that we have finalized our athletic director search and we have hired Rich Card Varier to be our new athletic director. Rich Card's currently the assistant AD for the Needham, for Needham High School, actually for the Needham Public Schools, since he worked through the middle school as well, too. Really excited to have him come on board. I know talking beforehand, you were just out of the lacrosse fields just before coming over here today. If I can ask you to just come up and just kind of say hello and introduce yourself.
So like you heard, my name is Rich Card Varier. Thank you guys for having me. I'm really, really excited to get on board and start working, not just in the high school, but the Westwood community. As Tim just said, I was just out there, you know, already trying to meet coaches and kids. So it's going to be good. It's going to be fun. Can't wait, can't wait.
Yeah, very excited to have you on board. Looking forward to years to come. And obviously, we want to thank Matt Gillis for his years of service. And Matt's still here. Rich Card's not starting until July 1st. So an opportunity to have some good transition through the spring season, but welcome on board. We're happy to have you here.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Continuing out of the superintendent's report, I have been talking about this coming for a while, so I'm happy to actually have it finally be here to talk about the strategic planning process that we're going to go through. So you have a more detailed memo and I'm just going to give some kind of high level highlights this evening. But really, the goal in strategic planning, we've developed our portrait of a graduate. We talked about the content of that at the last meeting. And it's about now, how do we develop a multi-year plan that provides a roadmap for how we improve as a district to allow our students to achieve those outcomes? Because those outcomes are only as good as the steps we take to allow kids to get there. The general structure of the plan is we'll have a series of focal areas, probably, you know, four-ish. You don't want to have too many because if you're focusing on too many things, you're not really focusing on anything. Within those focal areas, we want to have goals or strategic priorities, measurable ways of achieving, measurable goals for how we move towards that, the outcomes in the portrait of a graduate. And then underneath those goals, we want to have action steps. And what we really want to do with the action steps is instead of just saying, here's one year at a time what we're planning to do, here's what the arc and the narrative looks like over the next three years, let's say. So here's what we're doing this year, here's where we are, here's where we're going, here's where we want to continue to go in the future. Now, obviously, that won't be static because we'll reassess on an annual basis and we need to make adjustments to the action steps based upon how things are on the ground. But it really provides an opportunity for us to check in with how we're doing in the development of our strategic plan. So in order to support this, and I, you know, I've talked about wanting to do a more inclusive process. Generally, the strategic planning process has been the domain solely of the administrative council and then bringing it forward to school committee. So I wanted to develop a strategic planning team to support this development. We're looking for about 20 people. I would ask a member of the school committee to be a part of that. I think it's really important. I don't want to have more than one and have it then be a potentially a subcommittee and subject to all the things that come with it being a subcommittee, but have identified a school committee member, five to seven, seven members of our admin council, the admin council, for those that aren't aware, the central office folks, principals, assistant principals, deans, a couple of other people, four to six teachers. I want to have teachers from across grade spans to make sure that we have representation across subject areas. Two or three students. I know Amy and I have already had conversations about tapping some folks on the shoulder and, you know, if there are people that say are involved in the school committee process that would like to be part of the strategic planning team, I think we'd be open to those conversations. And then three to five parents and caregivers. Wanted to make sure that, again, we have representation from levels. I also want to make sure that we have representation from our Boston parents as part of that group as well, too. So I'll put on the invitation to solicit members tomorrow with the deadline for that being next Thursday, so we can identify people next Friday. And then really, the plan here is to meet on a bi-weekly basis. Right now, we're looking at probably Thursday nights. 6:30, we'll do it both in-person and hybrid. I always prefer in-person if possible, but because we want to make sure that geographic proximity or availability doesn't limit people's ability to participate, we do that in a hybrid model. But really, that group will meet every two weeks in April and May with their responsibility for developing the focal areas and goals. Essentially, what are the, what are the big picture things? What are the big rocks, to use that phrase, that we want to achieve through the strategic plan? But really, the domain of developing the action steps, the nuts and the bolts, the nitty-gritty for how do things work on the ground, that needs to continue to be the responsibility of the administrative council, the principals and central office folks that are in the building, working with staff. And there are checkpoints between our SPT meetings with the admin council. But really, the bulk of developing the action steps will happen in June and August. We have our June admin council, June retreat, August retreat. As you see in the memo, there'll be a check-in with the school committee about goals during our retreat in July, but then really a final plan presented to the school committee in September of 2025, so that we can hit the ground running at the beginning of next school year, knowing that here's the goals that we want to work towards, here's the action steps we're putting in place as we develop professional development for staff. And Caitlin will do a little PD update on what's going on this year. But as we design our PD for the coming year, we want to make sure that our professional development for staff is aligned with the outcomes and objectives in our plan and the action steps. And I, as I've said before, I'm really excited about this process. This is really where the high-level thinking around how we improve as a district takes place. And so I'm happy to receive any, I don't think I have any more slides, no. I'm happy to receive any more feedback from the committee about the process and just really looking forward to the work ahead. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to any committee members for any comments.
Will there be an intern presented before the school year ends for this committee?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think that's, we would provide an update. I want to make sure that we are not prematurely presenting, we are probably going to be in a place where we can talk about focal areas.
Yeah, yeah, not at.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to talk about goals because I want to make sure they're vetted by admin council, but I think it's certainly appropriate, probably at the June meeting, to provide an update to the committee. I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
I'm seeing nodding of heads, and so I will take that. I will go from there. Thank you, appreciate it. And again, really looking forward to it. For anybody out there watching, any of my folks that are here in the room, any students that may be in the room, we encourage people to get involved in the process. There'll be more details in the message that will go out tomorrow. The other thing under the superintendent's report is a professional learning update. And so for that, I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin.
Thank you. Yeah, so earlier this year, when I gave a PL update, it was right on the heels of our November full-day professional learning day. So at this point, I wanted to just talk about what are the different strands of PD that we have going, sort of humming throughout the year. These are ongoing. So the three pieces that we have are the early release Wednesdays, which I think is that's the piece that's most familiar to our school committee, to our families. We also have an after-school course catalog of educator-led professional development courses. And we also have some PD partnerships. So I'll take a few minutes to talk about each of those and then take any questions that you have. So our early release Wednesdays, as you're familiar with, they happen about every other week. A good chunk of those are set aside for contractual requirements. We have conferences that happen on those afternoons, report-writing days, collaborative times for educators happen on those days that are in the teacher's, the WTA contract. When it's not a contractual set-aside day, we have those days or those early release times divided up. Some are building-based, some are department-based, and some are district-led. The building-based days are the ones that are led and facilitated and planned by our principals, and so there's different things happening at every level. There's a memo linked with some more examples of things that happen on those building-based days. But for the high school, a chunk of those are looking at J-term, planning for J-term options. They've also been working on action research projects. At Kristen's here at Sheehan, they've been looking at student data and making plans and making sure that curriculum is aligned. So each building has their focus for those days. Department days, again, are led by the department heads. And depending on which department and what time of year, they're doing all sorts of different things. One theme that I was thinking about as I was putting together this memo is that I'm so excited to see that so much of these days, both building and department, but I think it especially shines in our departments, there's a pattern of looking at data and then planning instruction and looking at data and planning instruction. So whatever department it is, that's been a piece of it. The district-led days, I don't have too much more to add about those now. There was only two of them. One was an early release day back in October to prepare for our full-day professional learning and then the full day. Those were the only days that were really organized and put on at the district level and everything else was, or is this year, building-based or department-based. So this is the early release days. The after-school course catalog is a really, I'm going to say special because that's the word that came to mind and it's so true. This, we offered 14 courses this year. These are all led by Westwood educators for Westwood educators and our teachers can take them and earn PDPs and credits, graduate credits, for taking these courses. They run the gamut of different content areas, different focuses. We have three courses in progress currently. The offerings are just fun and relevant and timely. So I gave a couple of examples again in the memo, but we also had a course on executive functioning run. We had a designing using CAD system course run. We have a Tai Chi course running currently, looking at wellness. So we've had over 190 educators participate in these Westwood-led courses this year. We are currently in the process of soliciting courses for next year. So Angela Wilson is our PD coordinator. We pulled together the Professional Development Council, which is a representative team of teachers and administrators. We put out the all-call to say who would like to lead a course. These are the things that we are looking for as a district. And then we get the responses. So we had 22 courses get proposed just in the last few weeks. And so now the PDC is, went through a process of reading each course proposal, rating each course proposal according to our rubric of, you know, where does this align to district goals? Where does this align to the needs and wants that we're hearing from our educators? How does it balance summer, fall, spring? All of those pieces. And so in the coming weeks, I have to bring that list back to the central office team now to finalize our list of offerings for the next school year. Finally, the last piece I'll talk about and then I'll be quiet for a bit, is the PD partnerships. So educators need to collect a certain number of PDPs every five years for their recertification process. And DESI determines you have to have this many PDPs in this category and this many PDPs in that category. So to help our teachers make sure that they're maintaining their licensure and also staying up to date on best practices and all of that, we have a couple of PD partnerships that we pay for and we get a certain number of seats in each of those programs. And we advertise those through the weekly Monday memo to teachers and they can select which opportunities they're interested in. Some of them are by lottery. I know for one of them, teachers as scholars, we only get 20 seats. And so we put that out as a lottery and we, you know, pick out of a hat for the 20 folks who get to participate each year and try to make sure that we're giving everyone a chance as the years go by. But yeah, that is how we round out our PD offerings that are available to teachers over the course of the year. And that's sort of where we are now. I think the next big thing will be to finalize the catalog for next year. And then later on this spring, I will also be opening up a form to our educators, our principals and department heads, for summer curricular work, which is also in my mind part of the PD program. So summer curriculum projects that need to happen, those all get vetted through my office and funded through my office where it's time for teachers to work together on curricular projects. Are there any questions or comments or wonderings?
I have a wondering.
Yeah.
Do you happen to know of the, for the early release Wednesday piece, do you happen to know, I mean, how, what's the breakdown of the different types of programming? I think, I talk with families a lot who think it's just for training and I think this is helpful. I don't know if you know how many.
Off the top of my head, and I can go back to the calendar and count for you, but there's about 20 or 21 early release Wednesdays. Eight to 10 of them are the contractual set-aside. So out of the 10 or 11 left, it, two were, or no, one early release was district and the remainder were more or less split between building-based and department-based at the secondary level. There tends to be a little bit more department-based and at the elementary level, there tends to be a little bit more building-based, but most of the time, the days are the same across all levels. So that's the really rough breakdown and I can follow up with the exact.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
For the after-school catalog, I know you said we got 22 course proposals. Do we typically only run about 14 or do you need to get that list to 14 or do you kind of?
So it's, we use Title II funding to run the after-school programs and that is actually going to come up later.
I'll talk about that later in the federal update, yeah.
The amount of funding we get, we get a certain amount and then we actually share with Zavarian per DESI. We have to share our Title II funding with other private schools in the town that are interested. So a section of that goes to Zavarian, leaves us with about $22,000 that goes towards this. When we get those course proposals, some of them have one instructor, some have two. Two instructors is more expensive. Some are for one credit, some are for two credits, some are for three credits. The three-credit courses are more time and more expensive to run. So then it's like a big Jenga game of like, what can we afford? What's the rating from the PDC and what's our budget? So that's the work that's happening now to try to figure out how do we get there. So I would say 14 courses, that's probably around the number where we're going to land, but again, it depends. Do we have a lot of three-credit, two-instructor courses that came through this year or cheaper ones that maybe we can fit more in?
Okay, that's helpful.
All right, that's it for the superintendent's report for tonight. And then you'll hear from me on this other stuff later.
Great.
So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Caitlin. That was really helpful. In terms, oh, next, public participation. I don't know if there's anybody here who would like to speak, any members of the public.
Well, look at you.
So we will, there's nobody, so we will move right along. So for my chair's update, I want to let everybody know that we have our next school committee and district leadership office hour scheduled for Wednesday, April 2nd at 5:30. In the admin office in the professional development room, myself and Dory will be the school committee reps there. So again, for people who aren't familiar, it's a really great opportunity to come and have a true kind of QA and informal discussion. So Harley will be sending out a Google Doc to families where they can sign up and note whatever they're interested in speaking about. I'd also like to acknowledge that it was brought to our attention that our next meeting, the April 10th meeting, conflicts with the Thurston Middle School musical. So we're working really hard to see if we can reschedule that. So more to come over the next few days if we're able to do that, but we are aware. Does anybody else have liaisons reports?
I have a couple things.
Great.
I just wanted to remind everyone that next meeting, next April meeting, whenever that's going to be, is when we will be discussing the facility study. I think it's important that everybody understand that this is the study that's been going on now for nine months to a year, looking at all of our facilities. And Doran Whittier, the consultant, is coming and presenting to us current status and potential status. So I think it's going to be a really interesting presentation. So I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing, it's not a liaison report, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Westwood High School musical that was here. I mean, Joanna's son was in it and played an FBI agent very, very humorously and it was just an unbelievable production, as they always are. I just, I'm so blown away every time I go to these things, but it was really impressive and I just wanted to shout that out.
Well, thanks for saying that because I felt like I couldn't say it because my son is in it. I'm really glad you said it.
No, it was great. It was, I mean, the quality is unbelievable and huge cast and the dancing and the costume, my God, it was crazy. Very good. Anyway, that's it for me.
Anybody else? Any reports?
I can give an update on the dog park that I'm a part of. I think the headline is there's, there's a lot of conversation about putting something towards, you know, before select board and then to FinCon and then to town meeting. The headline here is that there's nothing going forward for town meeting. At this time, we're sort of regrouping, resetting our goals, revisiting the objectives of the working group and sort of resetting on what we, you know, what will get to, get us to a viable solution on this. I want to thank Reed, Reed Jones from Pine Hill. I want to thank you, Amanda, for joining. And Asanka Moore from the CPAC, she was, you know, she attended the last night's meeting and 30 parents and caregivers attended the 3/6 meeting and gave very compelling testimony about their experience at Pine Hill and its proximity to one of the proposals that we had considered. And I think coming from that, there's an understanding and an agreement that, you know, that the way Shuttleworth is, that location, the access point to it being so close to, you know, Pine Hill, the trailhead being right there, that in its current configuration, it's obviously not a viable solution. It's not something that will get us to a viable solution when it does go forward through the process. So I think families and the school community can be assured that in fact, you know, student safety and children's safety continues to come first and we will regroup as a working group over the next couple of months and get more feedback from the community and reset on what we're, you know, looking to put forth.
Thank you.
So thank you to, really for the community testimony on that. It was, I think it was really helpful.
I agree. And thank you, Joanna. I know you spent a lot of time on this and it's so appreciated.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Happy to do it.
Kevin, do you want to give an update on legislative council?
Oh yeah, I can do that. Unfortunately, this week's meeting was canceled. Yeah, because there's a conflict between your seminar. But recently, we had an interest, we had a really good discussion with, I know Ms. Davenport's device policy task force. Is that the right name? All right. But I think it was a good conversation because it allowed like a deeper connection between that group and then with the student, all the students who were present at legislative council. I think it allowed us to have a better view of the goals of the task force and also like from the perspective of teachers, like actually how challenging, you know, it is to actually implement these policies. I think I have like a kind of newfound respect for the teachers who kind of have to go through that thing. But we also implemented a new sheet, this new Google form for the menstrual products that have been placed in like the female bathrooms. And there used to be like no way to report that they were like out of supply, but now that we've invented the Google form, so we can notify the custodial staff of that. And I think, you know, that's a good step in ensuring that these menstrual products will be available at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Can I ask one, a follow-up question, I guess, of you guys. When will we get the Doran Whittier detail? I think they'd committed when we last met, like a month ago. You know, I like to dig in detail. Honestly, I don't want this to be dropped on us like Friday before Monday meeting.
No, we're having a meeting with them on Monday.
Okay.
That I know that, and so I don't have the answer yet, but I will make sure I get that answer.
Because I'm serious, I don't want to have a meeting that's just dropped on us like a weekend before, you know, Monday or Tuesday meeting for moving to the other meeting for it, so.
Absolutely.
Point. Anything else? Nothing? Okay, I'll hand it back over.
Okay, thanks. And actually, to follow up on two things. One, just on the, actually, two things that may have said, on the report from next time, I think it's important to acknowledge to the community, this is the start of the conversation and not the end of a conversation. And so we're excited to start the conversation with the presentation at the next meeting. And thank you, I, shame on me for not mentioning the high school musical production. I was there on Friday night. I think I was, I was too busy watching that I didn't take any pictures, which is why I didn't make it to the slideshow, but it was an absolutely phenomenal presentation, or phenomenal show, I should say. And so congratulations to all the cast members and the staff that worked so hard to make it happen, so.
My gosh, so good.
One other ask is, since we're sending out some district-wide emails on the committee as well as office hours, maybe we can tell them what the new school committee meeting is? Because I think this one is going to be, has a lot of community attention and I think we communicated April 10th. we communicated April 10th. And so just, you know, we should just communicate that as part of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can I add one more thing? Sorry. I was with, here on Saturday with my five-year-old for the performance, and as we were walking back out to the parking lot, she said, "Mama, that was just like the Rockettes." So the kick lines really stuck with her. It was phenomenal. We had a blast.
That's great. Can I actually ask a liaison question? So I'm the CPAC liaison. How did things go this past week with the, you held office hours?
Yeah, so we, I had had a lot of conversations over the last 72 hours or so. So the first meeting, there was a conversation over coffee at Neroli on Monday morning. We said, there are a couple of people that rotated in and out. We probably had around a dozen people or so, I think, during the course of the day that we're there, or during the course of the hour and a half. I think we extended it to about two hours that we were there. So it was a really good conversation. Following that, on Tuesday, both early afternoon and then later Tuesday evening, we're at two different two-hour chunks of meeting with people 20 minutes at a time, just to have some more individual conversations. And that have actually set up some times to meet with people outside of that as well too. Either they, the slots were all filled, or the times didn't work, so I'm certainly happy to meet and talk with anybody. It's been really valuable for me, and I know I said this to a number of people I spoke with, it's been really valuable for me to hear experiences of our families, particularly because we can have all the ideas in the world, but we, it's important for us to understand the impact. I also appreciate the openness and honesty that our families had in sharing their experiences and the trust they put in me, or in us as a system to share their experiences. So I thought it was a really positive and productive thing, and I'm happy to do it anytime, again, going forward, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's go to a less fun topic. So the, the next item on the agenda here is the impact of federal education policies. And so that, obviously, and, you know, there was, there was more news out of Washington today. I think the, let me just say that the overriding principle here is that we, there is, there are some conflicts between what the direction may be at the federal level and what the commitment is at the state level. Some of these things may get hashed out in the courts eventually. But so I wanted to provide this update to kind of give a sense of where we are right now and what we are committed to as a district. So, so first, I want to, I broke the memo to you into two parts. And the first part I want to talk is just straight-up finance. And so I think it's important to recognize that, you know, Westwood as a district does not receive any funds directly from the US Department of Education. Every, all, every dollar that comes federally comes from the feds to the, to DESI, and then DESI distributes to districts. And even the news about the Federal Department of Education today, I know the, the press secretary out of the White House basically said, "We're not looking to reduce funding, that we diverted to other sources." But, you know, I was talking with a colleague today about that there may be delays, given what's happening at the federal level, and that may be where the state rainy day fund kicks in, for example, something like that. But we receive roughly about $1 million collectively as a, from DESI, from the feds. The vast, vast, vast majority of that is in the special education IDEA grant, IDAs, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So that, that's the money that comes in to support special education in the district. There's a smaller amount that's particularly dedicated to special education, early childhood and preschool. That's that $23,000 amount. And then another $26,000, that's the Title II Teacher Quality Grant, which is what Caitlin talked about before, that funds are after school, or outside of school PD courses for teachers. I also want to acknowledge that the other place where federal money flows into Westwood is not from the Department of Education, but it's from the Department of Agriculture, and that's for the school lunch and breakfast program. And that's just as a reimbursement for reimbursable meals that come through. These dollars you're seeing, these are the dollars that we have as offsets in the FY26 budget. Even with everything that's going on, just because the federal funding calendar is different than the state fiscal calendar, we don't anticipate there being any issues in FY26. I think the concern is what may happen in subsequent years in FY27 and beyond. But at least, because I know we've gotten some questions around what's happening with federal funding, just to put on the table, here's what we receive in federal funds. We actually have a smaller percentage here in Westwood than many other districts because we do not receive Title I funds. Title I is, goes towards students of greater economic disadvantage. Our percentage of students in that category are not high enough in Westwood to qualify for Title I funding. But we know if something happens there, there will be impacts to many other communities, and then the state will have to make some decisions about how they allocate their dollars at the state level. So there may be some residual impact there as well too. So I wish I had more answers on this front. We just simply don't have them, but this is just, I thought it was important to put out sort of what the steady state is right now. The second part of conversation at the, you know, certainly is what's happening with the executive branch and civil rights for students. And I've, I've shared two excerpts from things in the memo to the committee, particularly in response to recent executive orders. And again, I think this is a place where the difference between federal law and state law may be stark, and the difference from state to state may be stark. But in short, the first quote is from a legal opinion from the Superintendent's Association's attorney, which I know was sent to us back at the beginning of February, which talks about the area of concern being the relationship between federal and state laws. And in general, the federal law set a baseline set of protections that must apply in every state, but states can choose to extend those protections greater. And that is certainly the case here in Massachusetts, particularly in areas of race and gender identity and other matters. And so it's important to know that Massachusetts laws are still in effect. I should add sexual orientation particular to that list as well too. And the final quote there is, "At this time, I do not see any definitive authority to indicate that Massachusetts non-discrimination laws have been superseded by federal law, including executive orders." I think the second part of this is there was a recent memo that came out about Title VI and discrimination laws. It's called a Dear Colleague Letter. I know that, you know, you've seen that, Joanna, in your professional life as well too. It was heartening to see the memo that was released by Massachusetts Attorney General Andrea Campbell a couple of weeks ago. I've put the whole, the first two paragraphs of that multi-page memo in the, in the memo, sorry, I use the word memo twice, Attorney General Campbell's memo in the letter to the committee here. And I think it reaffirms the same thing that we reaffirm here in Westwood, is that it's critically important we stay true to our mission of making sure there's a sense of belonging and inclusion for all of our students here in Westwood. To quote from A.G. Campbell's letter, "Educational institutions should continue to foster diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility among their student bodies." The US, USCED, US Department of Education's February 14th Your Colleague Letter correctly identifies federal civil rights laws that apply to IHEs in K-12 schools. It then, however, misconstrues Supreme Court precedent, wrongly implies that it might be unlawful for schools to consider the impact of policies and practices on diversity, and creates a misimpression of the impact of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility program. To be clear, nothing in the letter changes existing law and well-established legal principles that encourage and even require schools to promote educational opportunities for students of all backgrounds." So I share that again. It is a, it is a guiding principle, it is a guiding core value in the district, that every single child belongs here, that we need to make sure that we have an environment where every single child belongs here. And when I talk about the strategic planning process we're going through, one of our key focal areas will be taking the steps to continue to ensure that every single student belongs here in the Westwood Public Schools. So there will be court cases, there will be challenges, there will be all those things that will come through, but none of that dissuades from our core commitment to the students of this community. So I don't think I have a whole lot more to say about that, but I will certainly turn it over to the committee for any comments or conversation they want to have, that all of you want to have.
Yeah, I mean, I think you said it. You know, I think, I certainly am in agreement with that. You know, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I'd be surprised. I think that there's going to be a lot of noise, and there's going to be a lot of back and forth, and there's going to be a lot of legal wrangling and posturing. And I think we just need to put that aside, not really get into it, not even delve into it, and just continue doing what we do, which is, as you said, make sure every single student in our schools feels, you know, belongs here, feels like they belong here. And we'll just kind of keep going forward that way.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I have the privilege of seeing this impact at the higher education level, and, you know, it can be very distressing. It can feel like we're going against our values if we're being told in the news to do one thing or another. So I appreciate, really appreciate the clear-headedness and the focus on who we are and what we do here in Westwood, and, you know, kind of an affirmation of the focus on the work and focus on the students. So thank you. I really, really am heartened to hear this proclamation so, you know, definitively stated. Thank you.
I do think we're heading into a challenging economic environment. I think, you know, we're closing, or hopefully, closing, landing the plane on FY26. I think FY27 is going to be hard, and I just want to preview that for the, it's not just the school, I think the town is also going to, going to feel that. So I think we need to be a little creative going forward, but it sounds like FY26, we're okay for now.
Yeah.
And we'll just deal with FY27 when we get to it.
Yes. I think that's the best answer to give to that comment, so.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, right? Thank you for taking the time to explain all of this, and, you know, that we, I think, are in agreement that we're steadfast in our commitment to making sure that every student in Westwood Public Schools feels a sense of belonging and is having their needs met. That's not changed, so that will continue to be one of our guiding principles moving forward. So thank you for reiterating that for everybody.
Thanks.
I don't have any, I don't, don't you do this when you read? I have a classroom right or something, this?
Same.
Oh, same. Same. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else on that? We'll move along to the naming process for public, or for school district spaces. So this has been coming up more frequently over the past year, so I think it's something that always comes up, where people in the community want to request that a space, whether it be a room, or a whole building, or a field, be named after somebody who's made really great contributions to the community. And we realized when looking at our policy and going through some of these requests that we're not really clear on a process for that. We do have a policy related to, it's a school committee policy, that we try to steer clear of naming things in memorial of people who have passed away. We think it's kind of more meaningful to encourage scholarships or something like that, that would support students. But beyond that, we don't have a lot of guidance, so that's why we're going to hopefully be talking about that tonight, to work, start working on a process for it.
Yeah, and if, I can just kind of set this up a little bit. So, you know, at, I know Amanda and I were having this conversation after the last meeting, it asked me to put out a message out to the superintendents to serve, and where I basically said, "A lot of us have the same formal school committee policy, it's kind of the boilerplate policy that comes from the School Committee Association," looking for how people actualize this. And I know those responses I got back, I shared with, shared with the committee. And I think from my perspective, I'm happy to put together some kind of a process, but I think hopefully it can be informed by some of what you may have seen and may have either liked and want to include, or really didn't like and really don't want to include. And so any direction, I think it's helpful for me, for the committee, to have a conversation so that I can put something together to bring forward for the committee moving forward, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Does anybody have any thoughts they'd like to start with?
No, so, I have a little passion on this. No, I think, I actually don't think, the only thing we've named is this, since I've been on nine years, I think the only thing we've done named is actually this, this room.
After a person.
After a person, yeah. And actually, there's a lot of other things, I don't, historically, you can look around town, there's actually a lot of fields and stuff named, so I don't know, I think partly because there's no process. Without getting all specific, I did like some of the other, some details of the other towns, like actually laying out the process, whether that be subcommittee or, you know, but having, I think to me, it's important to have some guiding principles. We have a few, I guess, don't name them for dead person, but that's not really much of a guiding principle. Some guiding principles would be helpful for how we do that, and then some process, you know, we don't need, you know, I think some process for fielding those. Because at least personally, I know people may disagree, I don't have philosophically problem with the right moments naming things for whether that are live or, at least, that's my view, people may not agree with that. But anyway, so that's, I guess my view is like, laying out a process, as well as them getting some alignment on the principles, would be, I think, really helpful, because then we don't have to, like, every time these come in, and you could say, "This principle, is this?" It actually doesn't apply, or it does. So I think those would be the two things, I think, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I thought there were some interesting ideas that were shared in the document. How often are we, do we receive requests to name various things? I don't think I'm fully aware.
Well, I've been chair, we've received four.
Oh, okay.
So, and that, in thinking through a process for this, that's one of the things that's kind of, in my mind, is, is it appropriate for one committee, or one year, to name four parcels? I don't, you know, I don't, it seems like maybe it should be more spread out. That's something that I was considering.
Okay. Yeah. And I know, Tim, there's something that you and I talked about at one point around, I think you and I were talking about not making schools like a funeral sort of gathering spot.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there is some, some research out there that honestly, it's, I don't know if it's been, I mean, I remember this, having this conversation in my former district, before I even became a superintendent, probably 15 years ago, about not wanting to turn schools into essentially, I don't know how, how better to say it, but turning schools into cemeteries, right? I think that that's because they're, they're supposed to be a place of positivity and learning, and I realize that those, when tragedies occur, and we've certainly experienced those here, emotions can run really high in the moment, and I think that's another reason why it's important to have processes in place. And I think that that's a, sorry, just a moment. I think that, that is, I think that's why it's timed, it's timely to have this conversation. I think what I'm, I'm, at least I'm starting to pick up from this conversation, that there may be some value in identifying a, a working group or a subgroup. I would probably suggest it not be a formal subcommittee of the school committee, because these are conversations you probably don't want to have subject to, that every meeting is in public, because you're talking about some very sensitive topics. But it may be one member of the committee and a, you know, a couple of members of the community, or whatever that is. And that maybe that's the group that really digs into what policies are out there, or what other procedures are out there, and develops a process. But I'm, I'm open to any kinds of ideas in the committee on this.
Would the, the working group would be to establish the principles and the policy?
Yeah, and then I think, you know, what I've seen in other places is that, that group, certainly that group does not have the authority to supersede school committee, right? But that group would vet requests, and then would make a, if any requests came forward, then make a recommendation to the school committee to consider, right? So it's essentially a screening group, or potentially to actively solicit if there's something that needed active solicitation.
It sounds like it's similar to what we're doing with the cell phone.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I like that idea. I like the idea of having it be, you know, more than just the school committee who's involved. And the way I envision a group like that working is maybe they could meet a couple times a year, review everything that's come up over a six or 12-month period, and then decide. They don't necessarily have to decide on every single request, you know, in the moment. I think it's important to look at the totality of what's coming in.
So they would, would they make a recommendation to the school committee?
That's how I envision it. It's ultimately up to the school committee, but they're making the recommendations.
This is an ongoing group, not just like one time to sort of give us a suggestion around the process?
Yeah, I think it might be a little cumbersome, because we'd have to, like, reappoint people and...
Yeah, I've seen both, for what it's worth, so.
I guess, if we got, in my view, if we got this committee to agree on the principles, that may make it, in theory, that may make it easier. You might say, you know, this request comes in, doesn't violate our principles, or vice versa. These, giving this groups, and then the process, the process.
Yeah. I mean, because some of these other towns have very specific requirements.
Right, right.
You know, and they either fit into them or they don't.
Right.
I think that makes sense, to have a working group come up with the principles. I just think it might be hard for us to manage an ongoing one administratively. People are going to just keep coming on and off, and...
Right, right. One, in reading through what other districts were doing, one thing I couldn't get a handle on is kind of the vetting that is going into it, in terms of, like, is there anybody, whose responsibility is it to look into the background of somebody who's being kind of nominated? So somebody could have a really phenomenal experience with somebody, and then other people might not have the same feeling about that person. And that's something that I'm struggling with. And I don't know who, who has kind of the capacity to be doing deep dives into people's backgrounds to see if they're truly worthy of, you know, this acknowledgement. But it just makes me a little bit nervous and apprehensive.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think setting some guidelines and principles is kind of a first step, you know, things like having a waiting period, or, you know, not requirements, but, you know, some principles around, you know, how did they serve, or how long did they serve? You know, what was their impact in the community, those sorts of things. We can, you know, we can sort of set some guidelines, and then, you know, to Tony's point, that sort of helps, help us understand where this, you know, a proposed, where a proposal lands. I, I think it's, I think it would be worthwhile to have a, you know, kind of a subset of us, you know, kind of maybe talk through that, or, and come, to come back with a recommendation for the committee of what those guidelines are. And then the next step would be, okay, now how do we implement this?
Right. So do you want to move forward with that, putting a working group together?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can certainly, I mean, the committee could decide to do that right now, or if you wanted to have some conversations offline and then bring something forward to the April meeting, we can do that too, so.[1785.23]
I think, are we comfortable with deciding to put a working group together? And, yeah, we can kind of figure out who.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
So now, moving right along to action items. Can I have a motion to approve the February 13th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And is there any new business from anybody? No? Nothing? Okay.